Please stand salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for a moment of silence for those in harm's way, please. Thank you. Can you hear me with this mic? Can you hear me back there with this mic? Okay. Last time they couldn't hear me, which was... You're better off. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey have been satisfied by the inclusion of the date, time, and place of this meeting and notice of regular meetings adopted by this board on January 10, 2022. Such schedule and notice of meetings is posted at the municipal building, the Mount Olive Library, the Board of Education offices, and the six schools. Was submitted to the Daily Record for Publication on January 11, 2022. Must file with the Clerk of Mount Olive Township on January 11, 2022. I direct this announcement be entered in a minute. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Aquino?
Here.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yeah.
Dr. Gales?
Here.
Dr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Here.
Mrs. We met?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Zire?
Here.
Mr. Schloss.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize. We have to go in 15 minutes into closed session. I don't think it will be much longer than that. If anyone's going out for Dunkin' Donuts, I take... Bring it back. We're on closed session, gentlemen. For person... For person... We need a motion for closed session for personnel legal and suing.
Motion to close session.
Ball in favor. Ball in favor, aye? Close session.
Okay, we're back in open session. Mrs. Narcisse, would you please move the approval of minutes?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to move the approval of the open session minutes for 2.1 and closed session minutes for 2.2.
Second. Any discussion? Go call.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Wehman?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Desire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Are there any communications or petitions from the board? Superintendent?
None at this time.
Mrs. Strzalachi?
Yes, sir.
I don't have a petition or a communication. I just want to ask, can we turn down the air? Well, turn it up because it's cold.
Turn the temperature up.
Thank you, Dr. Gales.
Just a little bit.
Not too much.
Okay, they said not too much. But just...
You put it on 90.
I'm sensitive.
I'm sensitive too. I feel you.
Thank you, thank you.
Can we have the superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the entire administration staff, particularly our bus drivers, our custodians, especially our teachers and our teachers aides, our secretaries. Absolutely a smooth opening, just absolutely fantastic. It was great. It felt normal. And knock on wood, I hope it continues. The parent university that was virtual on Labor Day evening, we had about 350 parents participate, and I thought it was really good. I think there's a real hunger to keep that going, and we are going to do that. So coming out this week is going to be a full schedule of more parent universities for parents. And, you know, some feedback I got from some parents as well, some of these topics are, "I've heard this all before." Yes, because you have juniors, but then there are some parents of first graders who haven't heard this before. So it's a menu you can choose from. So you don't feel like you have to come to every single one, but we're going to make sure we identify the topics ahead of time so veteran parents may choose to not come or they might want to come back to them. Back-to-school nights are happening this week, and so we have the elementary, the middle school, and the high school. Take a look at all that. Excited for that. Our teacher's been prepping to welcome our parents into the schools. And you're going to hear us talking a lot about CUSAC. CUSAC is the annual, actually every three years, monitoring system from the Department of Education in the areas of governance, personnel, finance, operation, and curriculum instruction. And we have point people for each of those in the senior administration. So we're going to be going through that process and be reporting out on it. We believe our monitoring is going to be in November, so we have that going on. I'm confident we are going to do well on it, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Giordano, personnel report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Strzalachi. I apologize to the Board of Education. I did not get the... Just trying to pull up my notes, the minutes. I was not able to get the minutes back to Dr. Kreider and Dr. Zwicki, get them posted on the board docs, and I apologize for that. I just missed out on it when it was sent to me, and I apologize for that. So they will be posted. As soon as it's over, Ms. Jones, I'll send them to you, afford them to you so they can be posted tomorrow on this. So we talked about coverage for our business administrator. Person's been out for personal reasons, surgery, I believe. And Dr. Zwicki is working with Ms. Jones to see if we need... RBA said they might be able to work remotely from home, see how that works, but Dr. Zwicki may be coming back to the Personnel Committee and then to have full recommendations to the board about having some RBA cover once or twice a week. So we'll keep you abreast of that. PD roster was attached. The committee approved all that PD roster. Looking at my minutes right here. CUSAC, as Dr. Zwicki mentioned, it's going to be senior staff, senior administrators. So Dr. Bangia will be doing the instruction and curriculum. Dr. Kreider and Dr. Bangia for personnel. Ms. Libby and Ms. Jones for the fiscal. Ms. Libby and Ms. Jones for governance, and Mr. Miller for operations. Our staffing job fair, Dr. Kreider put together, went really well. Fifty applications, many of those were hired. I believe those were for paraprofessionals. Dr. Kreider's looking to do one for bus drivers as well, do a job fair for them, and trying to reach out to other districts in our surrounding area if they all want to try to do a job fair at our site, maybe in the dome, so we can get multiple districts out there and as many applicants for teachers, bus drivers, paras that we can get our hands on. Holocaust trip is on for the spring. We are looking to go with another school district, Freehold Regional. More to come on that. The No Barriers program, we are not doing all of it. We are adapting some of it to our needs, much like the Alice training, where we're not fully immersing ourselves in it. We are taking components of it and incorporating it to our district. Opening PD, as Dr. Zwicki said, he made mention of it opening day. It was a huge success. A new theme this year is having a staff member be the keynote speaker, and that went over very well. My understanding from people I heard from the Equity Ed camps were also a success, so great job for everyone involved. K-5 Lego First Robotics, they are requesting a stipend for those, and a steam tank stipends. It's just a lot of work. The teachers were volunteering a lot of their... Not volunteering a lot of their time, they were volunteering all the time. So Dr. Zwicki is going to meet with the EMO leadership. EMO will draw up a memo. Dr. Zwicki will then present that memo to the negotiations team, so that will be coming down the pike. And the rest we spoke about, and personnel, we just spoke about in a closed session, personnel issues that cannot be discussed in public. Did I miss anything? I'm sorry. In attendance was Dr. Zwicki, Dr. Bangia, Dr. Kreider, myself, Mr. Robinson, Dr. Gales, and Ms. Aquino. Anyone? Did I miss anything?
Any questions? Thank you. Dr. Gales, curriculum.
Thank you. So the Curriculum Committee meeting was held on September 7th at 5:00 p.m. Present were myself, Mr. Desire, Ms. Narcisse, Ms. Fenton, Dr. Zwicki, Dr. Kreider, and Dr. Bangia. And we started off with the reports, the Lincoln data, which included AP course exams and AP analysis. And Dr. Bangia will be meeting with the building administrators later this month to just aggregate the data, and it will be presented in committee to the curriculum committee next month. We talked about the grad rate. We talked about NJ Smart data. And Dr. Zwicki will be looking closely at indicators in the NJ Smart, particularly students who are off-track continuing or students who are transferred out, unverified, et cetera, because all of that speaks to eventually our graduation rate. Let's see, so he's going to look at dropouts, dropouts and transfers unverified. We talked about enrollment, and our current enrollment is 4,798 students, which is approximately 145 students higher than last year. It would be interesting. I did take the opportunity to go back and look at the report from the demographer back in 2020, and even though he had some incomplete data on new housing starts and developments, he did project that the enrollment will be flat. So it would be very interesting to go back and see if now we're able to count the bedrooms that he was unable to account for at that time. You've heard about the Holocaust trip, which is on. You've heard about the opening PD professional development recap. You've heard about No Barriers, which we also discussed. Let's see. You've heard about CUSAC. That was discussed. We talked about Real World Connections, which has been here in Mount Olive since 2019, which the district fully funds. It will continue. And as I mentioned at, I believe it was the last board meeting, they had their showcase, which I was a judge for, and the kids just did an amazing job in their tracks on their projects. And we're using Title IV funds to support that. We talked about SABERS, which is the Social, Academic, and Emotional Behavior Risk Screener. And this year, there will be an opt-in component, so parents will have to actually give permission for their kids to take it. And it's one of those assessments that I would... If I could advocate for it, I'm advocating for it because it gives us as a district, it gives our administrators and counselors and teachers a heads-up indicator as to the kinds of supports that students may need to be successful in school. We talked about Option 2. And we talked about the technology plan that Dr. Kreider is working on. And right now, we are up to the inventory of our equipment. So we'll be looking at hardware, software, pretty much our infrastructure. So we have an inventory and table of content that's in progress. And we discussed the action items that the committee all approved. And then I had to leave, and I left the other committee members there to continue discussing the action items. So if any of my committee members who were there when I went to the personnel meeting have anything else to add, please feel free.
No, we just kind of clarified a few things and just in the verbiage, and it was nothing actionable or worth discussing.
Okay. Anyone else? Questions? Ms. Wehman, finance, please.
Thank you. Sorry. We met tonight. It was myself, Ms. Libby was on the phone, Dr. Zwicki...
Not too much.
Okay, they said not too much. But just.
You put it on ninety.
I'm sensitive.
I'm sensitive, too. I feel you.
Thank you, thank you.
Can we have the superintense report?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the entire administration staff, particularly our bus drivers or custodians, especially our teachers and our teachers aides, our secretaries. Absolutely a smooth opening, just absolutely fantastic. It was great, it felt normal, and knock on wood, I hope it continues. The parent university that was virtual on Labor Day evening, we had about three hundred fifty parents participate, and I thought it was really good. I think there's a real hunger to keep that going, and we are going to do that. So coming out this week is going to be a full schedule of more parent universities for parents, and you know, some feedback I got from some parents as well, some of these topics are, I've heard this all before, yes, because you have juniors, but then there are some parents of first graders who haven't heard this before, so it's a menu you can choose from, so you don't feel like you have to come to every single one, but we're going to make sure we identify the topics ahead of time, so veteran parents may choose to not come, or they might want to come back to them. Back-to-school nights are happening this week, and so we have the elementary, the middle school, and the high school, take a look at all that, excited for that, our teachers have been prepping to welcome our parents into the schools, and you're going to hear us talking a lot about CUSAC. CUSAC is the annual, actually every three years, monitoring system from the Department of Education in the areas of governance, personnel, finance, operation, and curriculum and instruction, and each of the, we have point people for each of those in the senior administration. So we're going to be going through that process and be reporting out on it, we believe our monitoring is going to be in November, so we have that going on, I'm confident we are going to do well on it, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Dr. Giadano, personal report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Slatch. I apologize to the Board of Education, I did not get the, just trying to pull up my notes, the minutes, I was not able to get the minutes back to Dr. Kreider, Dr. Zawicki, get them posted on the board docs, and I apologize for that, it just, I just missed out on it when it was sent to me, and I apologize for that. So they will be posted, as soon as it's over, Ms. Jones, I'll send them to you, afford them to you, so you can be posted tomorrow on this. So we talked about coverage for our business administrator, person's being out for personal reasons, surgery, I believe, and Dr. Zawicki is working with Ms. Jones to see if we need, our BA said they might be able to work remotely from home, see how that works, but Dr. Zawicki may be coming back to the Personnel Committee, and then to have full recommendations of the board about having some BA cover once or twice a week, so we'll keep you abreast of that. PD roster was attached, the committee approved all that PD roster, I'm looking at my minutes right here. CUSAC, as Dr. Zawicki mentioned, it's going to be senior staff, senior administrators, so Dr. Bangia will be doing the instruction and curriculum, Dr. Kreider, Dr. Bangia for personnel, Ms. Libby and Ms. Jones for the fiscal, Ms. Libby and Ms. Jones for governance, and Mr. Miller for operations. Our staffing job fair, Dr. Kreider put together, went really well, fifty applications, many of those were hired, I believe those were for paraprofessionals. Dr. Kreider's looking to do one for bus drivers as well, do a job fair for them, and trying to reach out to other districts in our surrounding area, if they all want to try to do a job fair at our site, maybe in the dome, so we can get multiple districts out there and as many applicants for teachers, bus drivers, paras that we can get our hands on. Holocaust trip is on for the spring, we are looking to go with another school district, Freehold Regional, more to come on that. The No Barriers program, we are not doing all of it, we are adapting some of it to our needs, much like the Alice training, where we're not fully immersing ourselves in it, we are taking components of it and incorporating it to our district. Opening PD, as Dr. Zawicki said, he made mention of it, opening day, it was a huge success. A new theme this year is having a staff member be the keynote speaker, and that went over very well. My understanding from people I heard from the Equity Ed Camps were also a success, so great job for everyone involved. K-5 Lego First Robotics, they are requesting a stipend for those, and a steam tank stipends, it's just a lot of work, the teachers were volunteering a lot of their, not volunteering a lot of their time, they're volunteering all their time, so Dr. Zawicki is going to meet with the emo leadership, emo will draw up a memo, Dr. Zawicki will then present that memo to the negotiations team, so that will be coming down the pike, and the rest we spoke about, and personnel, we just spoke about in a closed session, personnel issues that cannot be discussed in public. Did I miss anything? I'm sorry. In attendance was Dr. Zawicki, Dr. Bangia, Dr. Kreider, myself, Mr. Robinson, Dr. Gales, and Ms. Aquino. Anyone, did I miss anything?
Any questions? Thank you. Dr. Gales, curriculum.
Thank you. So the Curriculum Committee meeting was held on September 7th at 5:00 PM, present were myself, Mr. Zaire, Ms. Narcisse, Ms. Fenton, Dr. Zawicki, Dr. Kreider, and Dr. Bangia. And we started off with the reports, the Lincoln data, which included AP course exams and AP analysis, and Dr. Bangia will be meeting with the building administrators later this month to just aggregate the data, and it will be presented in committee, to the Curriculum Committee next month. We talked about the grad rate, we talked about NJ Smart data, and Dr. Zawicki will be looking at closely at indicators in the NJ Smart, particularly students who are like off-track continuing, or students who are transferred out, unverified, et cetera, because all of that speaks to eventually our graduation rate. Let's see, so he's going to look at dropouts, dropouts and transfers unverified. We talked about enrollment, and our current enrollment is four thousand seven hundred ninety-eight students, which is approximately a hundred and forty-five students higher than last year. It would be interesting, I did take the opportunity to go back and look at the report from the demographer back in 2020, and even though he had some incomplete data on new housing starts and developments, he did project that the enrollment will be flat, so it would be very interesting to go back and see if now we're able to count the bedrooms that he was unable to account for at that time. You've heard about the Holocaust trip, which is on, you've heard about the opening PD professional development recap, you've heard about No Barriers, which we also discussed, let's see, you've heard about CUSAC, that was discussed, we talked about Real World Connections, which has been here in Mount Olive since 2019, which the district fully funds, it will continue, and as I mentioned at, I believe it was the last board meeting, they had their showcase, which I was a judge for, and the kids just did an amazing job in their tracks on their And we're using Title IV funds to support that. We talked about Sabers, which is the social, academic, and emotional behavior risk screener, and this year there will be an opt-in component, so parents will have to actually give permission for their kids to take it, and it's one of those assessments that I would, if I could advocate for it, I'm advocating for it, because it gives us as a district, it gives our administrators and counselors and teachers a heads-up indicator as to the kinds of supports that students may need to be successful in school. We talked about Option Two, and we talked about the technology plan that Dr. Kreider is working on, and right now we are up to the inventory of our equipment, so we'll be looking at hardware, software, pretty much our infrastructure, so we have an inventory and table of content that's in progress, and we discussed the action items that the committee all approved, and then I had to leave, and I left the other committee members there to continue discussing the action items, so if any of my committee members who were there when I went to Personnel Meeting have anything else to add, please feel free.
No, we just kind of clarified a few things, and just in the verbiage, and it was nothing actionable or worth discussing.
Okay. Anyone else, questions? Ms. Wiment, Finance, please.
Thank you. Sorry, we met tonight, it was myself, Ms. Libby was over the phone, Dr. Zawicki, Ms. Fenton, Ms. Narcisse, Mr. Karifi joined us, Mr. Miller was there, Mr. Miller gave his report of his facilities update for August, multiple items on here that he has done around the school, also taking care of Dr. Zawicki's office finally.
Finally, we're good.
So, you know, eight, oh, right, I forgot, my own.
Glenn was like Sisypheus for like six months.
Yes, he was great in doing that, I'm sure that was, and he's, now he has a new shingle out where you could say exterminator. Let's see, again, there's a multitude of, and anyone who wants to see this, be more than happy to, because there's tons of stuff that's on here, there's thirty-five items that he has done just for August, and Mr. Karifi also gave his report, interesting report because of just, and thank you so much with your work with MOPD, I think you had said that just in, where was it, sixty-one summons? For a particular time period?
Five days.
In five days, thank you, I wrote five days, and I know why I wrote five days, but in five days, that's deplorable, that, you know, you have these, and these are people who are passing school buses. He is currently working feverishly with the town, because the Board of Health is coming, we expect it to be on the September twenty-first meeting, for sharing in the revenue that comes from these tickets being paid by these people. Again, horrible to think that these people are actually passing buses. Let's see, he talked about the radios, the, I'm sorry, it's just that Gail does better notes than me, so she's really good with this. We, he reviewed information from the bark and gaggle alerts, discovery for bus tickets, also participated with the, with the MOPD on actor shooter training, which is great, so this way it's nice to have that relationship with the town, and our whole security team participated in this. Then, sorry, we went on to, let's see, a facilities update, security update, I didn't have anything on transportation, correct?
We got the memo, but Ms. Agnes wasn't there.
Thank you, I didn't have a checkmark next to that. We also will be receiving, well, we did receive it here, but we were receiving a use of facilities presentation that will be done by Ms. Soufley and Hershey, and we will be reviewing, get it pretty much has to do with the new fee schedule, and how it incorporates everything with the rec programs, just to get everything just straight across the board, we talked about the debt service referendum, the demographer possibly at the next meeting, let's see, da, 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 at the next meeting also with the IDEA and the X-Aid stuff. Friday, Dr. Zawicki has a meeting with the Ed Foundation, talking, I guess they're going to tell us a little bit about their donors with a press release. Let's see, what else? CUSAC Finance and Operations, Gail is working on that, doing an action plan, we're looking at October date for that, there is also enrollment reporting of how we're going to be covering someone who is, will not be able to do that, because they will be out. Everyone, you heard a couple bits about the bus driver fair, that's going to be in about two weeks, there was the superintendent and the principals' recommendation for the swipe, this all, this has to do with the score, no scoreboard, I got scoreboard on the side, sorry. Oh, I know I have scoreboard on the side, because the company we're working with are going to be giving us a fifty thousand dollar donation for the scoreboard, they did concede great work on the software bid, that was bone of contention there with them, so that is now in place, we're just waiting for some locks to come in in October, I believe I read somewhere. Let's see, ESTER funds, SOP, oh, SOP for Lynn and accounts payable, we'll be working on an SOP for approving hand-signed purchase orders, action shows lowest prices, we're, because we currently deal with ed data, we're just trying to get that more in place because of accounts payable and the nightmare that they have of just multiple places of where they're ordering different pieces from this country, so we're working on that, because, you know, they are going for the lowest price, but we're trying just to standardize that, just some security measures that we were doing, a one-year pilot, Dr. Zawicki is recommending an enrollment predictive analysis, let's see, what else is here, trailers we're looking at, possibly, again, that will be at the next meeting, we're looking at Sancho and Tince Road, again, the plan is getting in place because of just issues that we need to have the trailers for, we're looking at the Xerox TGI, kind of the print management, mapping and implementation, we're looking, Dr. you said to save over two hundred thousand by centralizing printing, okay? I wrote good notes sometimes. We're looking at renewing the Adidas contract, it's a great program that we have, and there's also Adidas books that comes back, and again, it's for the coaches, so it's like a win-win for all of us using Adidas. I said something here about demographic analysis, we have a plan for the Safe Return to School Plan, where there has to be four options, we need for that to get approved, and then just the action items of some budget transfers, as you saw, the approval of some co-op state contract purchases, software and instructional materials, and I think that's, is that everything? I think that's everything. Tell me if I missed anything.
No, I think you got it.
I believe I actually took good notes for once.
If I could just add one thing, with the recommendation to do the full swipe project at the high school, not a penny is amount of taxpayer dollars, it's all federal grant money, so that's coming from the, our ESTER grant.
The ESTER grant. That's it? Questions? Please don't ask, I don't know, Gail's not here.
Before we, Mr. Zaire talks about policy, we, I would like you to know that when we have our public comments, we are going to limit everybody to three minutes, no longer than that, more people want to speak and so forth, but we do have a policy, Mr. Zaire is the chairman of that committee, Mr. Zaire, you want to read that?
Okay, yes, so in regards to public comments today, policy zero one six seven by the Board of Education in Mount Olive, one of the things I want to make apparently, or crystal clear is that public participation shall be extended to residents of this district, persons having a legitimate interest in the actions of this board, persons representing groups in the community or school district, representatives of firms eligible to bid on materials or services solicited by the board, and employees and pupils of the district, except when the issue addressed by the participant is subject to remediation by an alternate method provided for in policies or contracts of the board, all right? No other persons will be able to speak this evening. Also, in regards to policies, on August twenty-second, the Policy Committee met, we talked about this previous, at the previous meeting, in attendance was Lynn Jones, Dr. Bangia, Dr. Kreider, Dr. Zawicki, Mrs. Fenton, Mr. Robinson, and myself, we discussed the healthy workplace environment policies of three-three-five-one, which addresses teachers, and the four-three-five-one that addresses support staff members. As you can read on those policies, in red are the changes that we made to those policies. However, I emailed the Policy Committee today to discuss a further change that may be added to the, to the last paragraph, which would help to us, can I read it? Yeah. Okay. "In the event of the investigation under this policy," and this will be before the final sentence, and it will read, "In the event of the investigation under this policy cannot be conducted by the Director of Personnel and Innovation or other district employee in a fair and objective manner, the district shall retain an outside independent investigator." That will be perused by the Policy Committee and will make a final decision. Next board meeting on the nineteenth, this policy will be at its second meeting, as it was tabled previously at the end of the school year. So just please be make aware of those changes, and if you have any questions or concerns, please let us know.
Questions? President's report. As a courtesy, folks, and I asked it last week, all cell phones should not be out on while this board meeting is going on. Dr. Zawicki, Mr. Robinson, and I will be visiting our schools to gather information regarding a possible expansion referendum, if you would please notify the principals that we would be coming, I'd appreciate that. I believe you have also been working on our student population, and we need to know that population as, as the capacity of these schools, and we definitely, folks, we have to definitely have another demographic study, there's no question about it. When we had the last referendum, and when we built what we built at the high school, we left approximately this, give me a little latitude here, we left our schools in this situation, our elementary schools have the capacity, seat-wise, for about twenty-two-hundred students, our middle school fourteen, our high school sixteen, which is fifty-two-hundred. You heard tonight, we have, we're at four, over forty-seven-hundred, but that's misleading, because when we talk about capacity, we talk about X amount of seats per classroom, and those classrooms now are not using sometimes that full amount, because now we're one-on-one with special ed, or any other ABAs, or therapies, or what have you, so we have shrunk in our capacity, but our school population, as you heard, has gone up about a hundred and twenty-five. That's why we need to have a new demographic study, and that's why we are truly looking at possibly a referendum coming up. To the board, remember, this now starts the first meeting of our workshop designation. Action items on the agenda are for discussion and not for a vote, the exception being the approval of monthly expenditures. As discussed before, if there is an action that is deemed necessary, we have always authorized the superintendent to resolve that issue on a temporary basis, and the board will vote retroactively after that. I would like to compliment our director, Mr. Karifi, if you noticed, not long ago, we were voted one of the safest schools. Around the end of the nineteen nineties, we were one of the first schools to ever have security officers. The town got a grant from the state for two officers, and we had one in the middle school and one in the high school, and we each paid for one of those. The second year, we had to pay for both of them, but we kept going, and we have just kept our schools as safe as we possibly can be for your children. We have fourteen security officers now, and at the middle school and at the high school, we always have four, and at some times, at around one o'clock, we now have five security officers, they're stationed at different posts, and so on and so forth, we even have them going into the parking lots, into lunchrooms, et cetera. So I'm very proud of the job Mr. Karifi has done, thank you, Mr. Karifi. I'm going to let you say that. If I try to repeat it, it's like, you know, you go down a line here.
So how we're operationalizing what the board president just said is that, when we have our committee meetings, where the action items we present in the committee, we're presenting the ones that absolutely have to be done at the next meeting, like personnel, there's some deadlines of approvals for the Department of Education, those are on this meeting. So the committee meeting, the committee members have action items that are not listed here that'll be on next, next week's meeting.
So you're saying that the action items that are on here tonight are necessary?
Correct, but the, each of the committees has all of the action items for the month, and we divided those up, either we color-coded them.
They'll be on the next meeting.
Correct. So, like, for example, a whole bunch of the finance stuff that we discussed tonight, none of that, none of that is on here, but all the personnel is absolutely necessary, the curriculum stuff is stuff.
There's some personnel that'll be on next week, because they weren't absolutely necessary at this moment.
Like winter coaches are on next week, we don't need to do those right now.
Well, it's going against what I, what I wish, because, you know, again, if I'm not in a Personnel Committee meeting, and I'm voting on these items tonight, and the people voted me to do the best I can and be educated, I have no idea what I'm voting on, because I have not been in that discussion, and any other board member here who was not in finance, or who was not in personnel, who was not in curriculum, does not know what they're voting on tonight either, so I'm going to decline, we're not going to vote on those tonight, I'm telling you right now, that's not going to happen. We're going to, we're going to vote on everything at the next meeting. Now, I'll, I'll take the board, if you want to challenge me on that, and you think it should be done, I'll listen to you, but that's not the way I feel about it. Dr. Giadano, I'll start with you.
I think you can't run a district our size with that, I understand your point, we want to slow things down, and I'll go back to my statement when you first said this, Mr. President, we've always done it this way, and all's I need is access to board docs, which I have, Lynn, I'll have to ask you to show me how to do it, and I will search all those action items we've done, since I've been on this board for seventeen years, and maybe not has been as many as we've grown, but we have absolutely moved items at both meetings, and I understand your point, and I do think you have to lead up to the administrators to run a district, to say, we need these things moved at this meeting, I mean, things are happening quickly. I agree with your point, some of the things, some of the personnel stuff can be pushed off until next board meeting, but I'm assuming, like, these staff members that, you know, need to be employed, need to start almost immediately, because we're, we need them. So that's just my two cents, but you're the board president, I just think you can't run a district efficiently and effectively.
I have, I have a little bit of a concern about items that, either for finance, or for, again, I'm looking at the staffing as well, if they're urgent, that we need to approve them today, that we should, I agree that the bulk of the items can wait till the next meeting, that's my concern of the items that are necessary.
We have to pick and choose what's on there tonight.
Unfortunately, yes.
I don't think we have to pick, I think we get it from the administration to pick and choose that.
District has to, well, we have to be told what's urgent and what can wait.
Why don't we ask the administration, perhaps, to certify to us which ones are the, I would call them emergent matters, or the ones that are pressing, is probably a better way to put it, Dr. Zawicki?
So the ones listed, so myself, Dr. Kreider, Ms. Jones, and we went through this, also our support staff as well, K. Van Horn, for example, you know, the personnel items that are on here have to get done this week, it's hiring substitutes, it's staffing, there's contracts on here for the instruction of homeless students, some of these things are holdovers from our last August meeting that we've been sitting on, I'll let, you know, Lynn speak to the finance component, and Dr. Bangia speak to the CNT things, but we prepped the chairs and went through each of the committee meetings, that we were dividing these into the things that we absolutely have to do at this next meeting, and then the things that would be on the nineteenth, so every, every committee did it the same way. If we hold off, you know, we can go through right now, but I think there's, you know, there's some things that are DOE deadlines that we got to get done and stuff like that. Dr. Bangia, if you would speak to some of that.
Certainly, the ones that are listed for curriculum and technology often relate to special ed, and we need to make sure those services are being implemented for students, so certainly when we met with the committee, we went through, I think we had close to maybe eighteen, but we took out a handful of them, because we believe they can wait for the second meeting, but the ones listed on for tonight have to be, are timely manner, especially like field trips, you know, we just want to make sure those things are done prior to the next meeting.
Go.
We have done this before, you remember, too, that we have taken different items and voted on this meeting because of critical criticality, but we still knew about it beforehand, that these were critical, and I think that's what has to come through, you know, you just can't just pop them in there. I understand in the beginning of the year that we'd have, you know, a lot of jobs that we couldn't fill, because there was nobody around, and that we have to fill them right away, or they'll go somewhere else, so, I mean, I can appreciate that, and, you know, I think, like you said, though, that they should be noted, those kind of jobs and so forth should be noted, that these are critical, that we have no other choice, period.
And we did do, so, for example, CNT, there, it was red and green, red, or we got to do it right now, green, we can do a week later. Finance, we tagged all the action items that are next week, right, we kept saying, these are all next week, next week.
That's all, good, but what you said, CNT was notified, but only those people in CNT, not the, not the rest of us.
So then, would be a solution to this, that we then share the committee agendas with the full board, so you can all see that ahead of time? Okay.
Everybody okay with voting tonight on these, but from now on, we need to have some that are redlined and some that are blacklined, so that we know that that's not necessary? Does that sound about right?
Sharing, exactly what you just said, sharing the agendas ahead of time is helpful, because then you know what's coming up.
Good point. All right?
Makes sense.
Okay. All right, so I skipped the subcommittees and PTAs, if there's anyone here from PTAs, or anyone's subcommittee would like to come up and address this? I know we don't have any liaison yet, do we have that in the, in the works, the liaison students coming?
I think they're getting appointed to the next meeting.
Okay, we'll move on now. Going to open it up to the public for any action item comments, and action item onlys, remember, we have a three, three-minute limit, please.
Do you want to ask Ms. Jones to keep the time coming?
No. No.
Board docs, actually, is a timer up.
Don't I do it?
No, you can if you want, yeah.
Martin Wells Muller, 25th Brookridge Avenue, Butler Lake, New Jersey. If I heard it correctly, we got another $50,000 donation for the Jumbotron? Is that in addition to the $315,000 we had before?
So, we're gonna be meeting, I'm not speaking on behalf of the foundation. So, yes, I shared an anecdotal data point during the finance meeting, but we're not prepared to, the Ed Foundation's not prepared to announce all the donors yet.
But that's in addition to the $315,000?
No, that was someone, that was included in the original.
Okay, that's why I wanna know. Thank you.
Anyone else? Action items? Can it close the public? Ms. Aquino, please move the monthly expenditures.
I'd like to make a motion to approve our monthly expenditures, action items 6.1 through 6.6.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Wimet?
On monthly expenditures, anything CCM on the bill list abstain.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes. Okay. Dr. Gales?
Not yet.
You need personnel?
Personnel.
I'm sorry. Getting confused, I beg your pardon.
Two G's, I get it. And we look similar.
We're still calling 911, though.
That's right. Call 911, you still need other doctors to come in.
And they're both Dr. G's.
As Mr. Zire likes to point out all the time. On the recommendation of the superintendent, move personnel action items 7.1 down to 7.17?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes. And I apologize, I have three questions, because I thought we were just discussing things tonight and not voting on them, so I didn't submit my questions. But on 7.2, regarding the resignations, have we begun the process of exit interviews?
Dr. Kreider has that as an automated system now? Absolutely, yep.
Fantastic. And then 7.6, we're hiring aides. Do we know the number of aides who were listed here, aides and support staff? How many of those came from the fair we just had in August?
Dr. Kreider?
I think Dr. Kreider reported I was 15, that you told us, 50 or 11?
There were 15 that came.
I don't know how many of them are on tonight's, if the turnaround was that quick.
Okay, okay.
Then information from K. Can't, K. will be able to tell me like that.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
And then finally, 7.8, the approval of the PD. Are these the teachers who participated in the Ed camp?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, that was it.
Anyone else? Yeah, I have a concern, too. Dr. Zwicki, I brought this up at the last meeting. From May through tonight, we have, and I'm not counting long-term subs, only full-time teachers, okay? We have accepted 15, either retirements or resignations, and as of tonight, we've hired 45 teachers. What I would like to know is, if you can get this information to us, I would like to know how many teachers we had on staff in June, and how many teachers we have on staff now.
So, sure, yeah.
So that we have X amount of more students, I wanna know why we have X amount of more teachers.
Absolutely. So, we had a meeting with Gail today at 11:30, and one of the big items we discussed was the central. Position control roster, thank you, sorry, I had a brain space there. The position control roster, which she is updating based upon all these hires, that's something we actually need for Q Sac, so you're going to get that shortly, and then you're gonna be able to see all of that. But Gail was working on it, literally, we met about that request today.
And the reason why I ask that is, I know bubbles come through, and I know that there was a point in time where we literally had to bus kids from Sand Shore down to Mountain View for kindergarten, because there was such an influx. And if that's the case, and like, you told me, we're gonna have to add a kindergarten on at Mountain View, well, do we need another teacher, or is there someplace else that has less students that can have that teacher transferred down? That's another thing I'm getting at.
So that's one of the things that we do. Mr. Robinson is absolutely on top of that, and we do do that shuffling around with kids, and say, we say to parents, hey, you know, this class here has 26 kids in it, but there's a class with 19 kids across town. And that goes on constantly. We're constantly offering that to parents, some parents take advantage of it. And a lot of parents actually prefer it, because that school's closer to where they work and things like that, but that goes on constantly. But the position control roster will answer your question, it's something that we get ready for mid-October, and Gail's, we met about it today at 11:30.
You know, being a businessman, I'm always worried about costs. So when I see that payroll going up and up and up, and everything that's accompanying, you know, I worry.
I have a question.
Yes.
I would like to request that the board sees the exit interviews, minus the personnel or the personal information, I'd like for us to see those.
Okay, absolutely.
So Dr. Kreider has a whole reporting system set up to do that for you?
Thank you.
Other question?
Not a question, just a comment, because what you said kind of reminded me of the request that had the longitudinal study done of resignations. Remember, we talked about the five-year longitudinal of resignations from the district, that I know Dr. Kreider will work on when she has spare time. All that spare time she seems to have, yes.
PCR is the current data point to then go backwards, so we can take a look at this PCR and go back to 2019 when we did our first PCR. So, and you're not gonna get five years. You're only gonna get to 2019, because 2019 was our first PCR. And then you'll be able to compare all those together, and we can do all that.
Okay.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Wimet?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes, Dr. Gales. Brooklyn, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve curriculum and technology action items 8.1 to 8.11.
Second.
You're on the books. Any discussion?
I believe that the, I'm sorry, yes. I believe that the code of conduct is somewhere in here.
8.11.
Right. And so, I just had one comment and one question. And so, the comment is, implied in the code of conduct is the student's right to be respected, but it's not expressly stated, I didn't see it. And my suggestion is to have it explicitly stated. It explicitly states that I will respect other people's rights and other people's property, but there's nothing in there that says it's my right to be respected. So I just would ask that you take a look at that. And regarding the behavior rubric, there are some RTI supports at the top of the page, and then the rubrics at the bottom. I really didn't see how the RTI supports were infused into the rubric. I just saw the rubric as a lot of punitive stuff, but we have the RTI stuff at the top, and then the rubric is at the bottom. I would think that the rubric, the RTI supports will be infused into the rubric?
Those are, so those RTIs are...
There are some there, but...
Yeah, so the point is the fact that that allows the staff to, families to understand the fact that just because something happens, it's not going to be punitive every time. There's gonna be tiered-based support mechanisms placed in, depending on what's going on with that child. So it's making sure that the community realizes that it's not one and done, that just because something happens with that child, there is a tiered approach to support the students.
So, can I jump in real quick? So, just so I understand, because I'm not the smartest person in this room, so when I look at the RTI model, it says tier one behavior supports. If I'm a student, and my behavior is possession of a nuanced item, if not approved, and the first infraction, it says, warning, student directed to put item away, parent notified by teacher, my tier one supports, the behavior supports will be that tier one in that upper RTI column.
Yes, and also the fact that in some cases, it's just making sure that we have a gradual array of supports placed in for students, so it's not, that's always punitive, that's really what it comes down to.
When the infraction happens, tier one, this is the RTI support for tier one. Fraction, tier two, tier one.
And I would say, the other thing is based upon the student's success plan, or if the student is on a behavioral plan, and also based upon screening we get from savers, we might have a plan already in place that has some tier two support. So for some students, the tier one might actually trigger some of the tier two stuff. And that's why, you know, the savers, and you've been a great champion for that, Dr. Gales, that's why it's so important.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mrs. Wimet?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes. Mrs. Wimet, finance, please.
On the recommendation of superintendent, I make a motion to approve the finance and operations action items 91 through 94. I just wanted to point out, we didn't talk about 94, correct, at our meeting? I just wanted to say, there was a couple little things in there on the snacks that I did notice that had gone up, so I just wanted to make sure that was noted on.
I think, hold on, I think, was that June or July, Gail gave you guys the price list? I wasn't at that meeting, but she gave you guys that price list. I think that happens at the end of the spring.
I didn't talk about it.
No, we did not talk about it, yeah, because I think, we skipped over it, because it was something that we discussed.
There were a couple little items on there, like, I think...
Pop tarts.
Was it pop tarts?
Pop tarts, blueberry bars.
Orange reduced fat that Mr. Zire likes.
I have to come home with change in my hands, I don't know what to do with it.
That's it.
Every time you talk about snacks, his ears pick up.
I'm actually interested now.
Any other, oh, second. Any other discussion?
I just wanna point out that, even though some of those prices have gone up, I appreciate the fact that our food services are trying to keep the prices to a minimum. There's a lot of prices that did not go up, and that remain the same, even though their food cost has gone up. So, as a big person for feeding our kids and doing it as inexpensively as we possibly can, I appreciate that.
Yes, very few prices went up, I'd say maybe three, four, out of the whole entire list.
That's impressive, actually.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Wimet?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Zire?
Yes.
Mrs. Aquino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fenton?
Yes.
Dr. Gales?
Yes.
Dr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Narcisse?
Yes.
Mr. Strelachi?
Yes. Now, opener up for public comments on any item you wish to discuss, and please try to keep it three minutes or less, please.
Yeah, you wanna do it?
No, no, I'll let you do it. Make it legal.
It's on the board.
Yeah, it's actually on the board.
But you gotta restart.
The clock's already going.
You gotta restart. I'll keep track, go ahead.
You'll get next to 10 seconds, go ahead.
If you, as Martin Wells Muller, 25th Brookridge Avenue, Butler Lake, New Jersey, I'll do my best to keep it in three minutes. If you recall from a most recent Board of Ed meeting, I wanted to discuss ethics and policies, and I'm back today to just do that once again with more information. Anthony Strelachi, the president of Board of Ed, concurred with me at the last Board of Ed meeting, that board members ought to be held to higher standards than what's required of staff, and I couldn't agree more. So I hope that our Board of Ed finally addresses these unethical practice of two Mount Olive Board of Education elected officials. I'm gonna read a letter that I addressed the whole Board of Ed on Friday, September 9th. To all the members of the Board of Ed and others, and now the community of Mount Olive, it sends me today to inform you about some information I obtained from other Oprah requests I made to other organizations. I recently received a significant number of emails that I requested through Oprah request. As you recall, I provided an email from Liz Wimet at the most recent Board of Ed meeting, in which she emailed a student using her personal email account in violation of Mount Olive school policy and board ethics. I discovered even more issues that the board has to address, and I'm bringing them up at the Board of Ed meeting on Monday, which is tonight. The first, were emails from Liz Wimet to Antoine Gales about Dr. Robert Zwicki. Instead of using her official Board of Ed email address, she utilized her CCM email address, which is Morris County College, to address Mr. Gales at CCM's personal email address. The original email was sent by her personal email address, showing her intentions to keep material private and hidden from the Board of Ed members and the Board of Ed email system. In my opinion, this is content of her email is hostile and threatening to our superintendent, as she is collaborating with other Board of Ed members. Number two, the other 20 emails were sent by Antoine Gales as a board member. I'm confident that he informed the Board of Ed of his employment at CCM back in March of 2022. I assume the Board of Ed granted and written permission to now email Mount Olive staff, and at the time, Mount Olive current students, as an employee of CCM, so he wouldn't have to use his official Board of Ed email, which is required as a sitting Board of Ed member, and knowing how he carries the code of ethics with him at all times. I can't see him failing to follow proper ethical procedures. Okay, I realize he probably didn't follow the rules, because he doesn't believe they followed him. They applied to him. Also, did the Board of Ed give the administration authority to release the names of students to Dr. Gales? I'd like to also make a formal recommendation that certain Board of Ed members attended workshop on assisting board members avoiding ethical minefields, because they're treading all over them. Finally, I'd like to emphasize that my objection to Mr. Gales signing the contract agreement that was unethical, and that I had no issue with the concerns about the students attending the program, it's about adhering to the ethical procedures and guidelines established by the Mount Olive Board of Ed and School Ethics Committees. It amuses me how they try to twist the situation rather than address the underlying issues. Deflection appears to function better for them than doing what's expected of them.
Okay.
I have finally five little points here.
Okay.
Has the Board of Ed requested a letter ruling from the School Ethics Commission about the matter brought to the Board of Ed?
Cut to the board's president.
Okay, well...
You could finish reading it at the next session.
That's just one of these distinct things, that's enough.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So, has the Board of Ed requested a letter from the School Ethics Commission about the matter brought up in the last Board of Ed meeting with Antoine Gales, and if so, has the Board of Ed received a response yet?
Not in charge of any.
We're working on it.
Okay. Never do, has the Board of Ed addressed Liz Wimet's use of personal email account to contact students, given her written warning or violating the communication policies and the ethical standards conducted by the Board of Ed?
We're working on that, too. Now, I have to cut you off.
Because once we start extending it for one, it becomes something we're gonna have to do for everybody.
Well, I'll just have somebody else finish this work.
Okay, that's good. You could do that.
You could have somebody else read it.
Just read the last three.
Well, let the next person, I think the young lady was next.
By all means, please let him finish the letter.
Finish the letter.
Thank you.
Finish the letter.
Good evening, I'm Randy Jensen, 117 Mine Hill Road. I've got a couple more questions here. Did the Board of Ed once more authorize the administration to disclose Mr. Gales' names of the students?
It's not a back and forth, why don't you just read all the questions?
We have to take everything under advisement.
My understanding is that disclosing student information to outside groups by the Mount Olive District, School District, would be a violation of the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. I hope the Board of Ed takes action rather than doing nothing in light of the information I've provided on the use of personal email once more today. I imagine the Board of Ed attorney would urge that this be taken care of as quickly as possible. The evidence is quite clear and not fictional at all. Please see me after the Board of Ed meeting. If you want a copy of the email I submitted to the Board of Ed and its attachments, since they are the only ones who have the email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm borrowing table space. I promise I will stay within three minutes. Anyone who knows me knows that's impossible. But the first thing I'm going to do, Shelley Morningstar, 70, Oakwood Village, Flanders, New Jersey, is do a follow-up, not on the alarm clock, to Dr. Kreider because I promised her after the last Equity Task Force meeting, of which I am a volunteer, and after the March 2002 Board meeting and my participation both in the April and May regarding the services and supports that are available for education of our Board of Education on humility training, also to be offered as part of our professional development to all faculty, staff, bus drivers, and other folks. I would like to say that I forgot to bring these by so that you could distribute to them, to the faculty members who have direct access, and the contact information, Dr. Zwicki, because I've asked you now seven times to please make sure that humility training from one of the region's premier LGBTQ+ organization is now included as a part of professional development in the 2022-23 school year. I'm not done. Thank you, Ms. Fenton, and my apologies to the Board.
You get 20 more seconds for walking away.
I needed to get that handled from the last agenda. First of all, welcome back, everybody, to the new school year, and thank you to the Board of Ed, Dr. Zwicki, and the administration for making it a smooth, nice transition. I've heard from friends of mine who have the kids in the district that the first week, by and large, including the very first two days, went very, very well. So congratulations. And to Mr. Karifi. Thank you and your team for staying on top of the critical safety and well-being of our students and safety of our transportation bus drivers. It is really reprehensible that we have 61 summons issued in just five days to people who don't respect the laws and the safety of school buses. But I wasn't planning on saying any of that other than welcome back. The first thing is, I'd like to, I wasn't able to attend the last Board meeting, and I will admit that I was not able to watch the live stream, both in real time or in totality since. But I would like to take this moment to acknowledge that I'm very grateful to hear that the Ethics Board for the New Jersey State School Board Association, who investigated the claims issued by Mr. Martin Wells Mueller against Dr. Antoine Gales, was officially dismissed because there were no facts and no information to substantiate any of the claims. I recall that this cost the district approximately $8,000 to $10,000 and maybe more. I'd like a full report on that next Monday. Number two, I am hoping for the same for you, Mrs. Aquino, and I am sorry that this district and taxpayers are spending this kind of money to fight intentional misleading and misinformation spread to endanger our Board of Education, our School District, our students, and our exceptional faculty. Out of the kindness of me giving this gentleman the next spot I'm going to finish with, I would like to take this moment to acknowledge Danielle Kay and Julia Smore, who are the co-chairs of the district's Equity Task Force, and officially to meet offline and in person, I was coming there, Dr. Zwicki, to say hello to Dr. Bangia and to thank you for serving as the primary liaison. I am a proud volunteer member of that Equity Task Force, and I encourage all of you to understand where the Equity Task Force lies in meeting the mission of our school board and our district that is the responsibility of every one of you sitting here that were elected to office and those employed by the taxpayers, Dr. Zwicki, and your entire administration. We are not going to go to sleep understanding that there is intentional misleading upending of public education going on in this country. I'm awake, I'm here, I'm not going anywhere, and I want to thank the educators for all of what they do in our district to educate our children and keep the real mission the real mission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we doubling down to six minutes now?
We're, we're trying. I, I just don't like to be rude and cut people off.
No, of course not.
But, but we do have to keep a certain decorum of time. You can't go on for 20 minutes.
No. My clock started ticking.
I've got a separate clock, don't worry about that.
Can I have my time reclaimed, please?
Your sentence seconds, Ben.
I took your time.
All right, thank you. Kevin Stansbury, 26-year member of the Mount Olive Administrator Supervisor Association, elected vice president, and I'm here to voice the concerns of the administrative team, the incredible professionals that they are and the work that they continue to do. I'm here to remind you that since May 3rd, to the present, our association members are still facing reprisals, inquisitions, and retaliatory actions. We asked for parity of protocol. I think that was very clear, and I hope that wasn't misrepresented at the last meeting, but we want parity of protocols. When we asked for the revisiting and rescinding of action items, we don't believe that they were done in the manner of which they should have been conducted, that under false pretenses, or that you find that station and post were in question. We have been voicing our concerns diligently. We have been more than professional and patient from May 3rd, when we made the first official presentation to the board panel, to the present day, today, September 12th. What has the Board of Education done to protect and support our administrative team? I asked that question, I asked it last meeting, because the actions continue. They're actually getting worse, in my opinion, and I think my, my fellow members would also concur. These are tenants of the New Jersey School Board Association. And like I said, individual and maybe full-board repercussions could take place because we feel like we have not been represented. And we talk about what's critical to be approved at Board meetings. I would imagine that this is a critical item that should be addressed. We look forward to the Mount Olive Township Board of Education officially requesting the report from Action Item 10.1 from the June 13th meeting, again, without redactions or omissions, and your timely and definitive resolution. I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration, and I yield my 37 minutes back to the Board of Education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. You're awfully tall there, Mr. Stansbury. It's okay. Hi, I'm Betty Hyden, I've been at this for 25 years. And so I have a couple of questions that I asked last time, I was just wondering if anybody had an answer for me? I ask these questions at August 22nd meeting. The secretaries that were changed from affiliated to non-affiliated, was it budgeted? Was that budgeted for us? Anybody have an answer? Okay, I'll just move on. Did those changes go through the Personnel Committee? Did that, does anybody have an answer? Okay, I'll move on. Did the Personnel Committee do the math? Any comparison of salaries from last year to actually see the proposed salary increases? Okay?
Ma'am, just, just so it's clear, you're, you're free to speak, but this is really not a back and forth, so why don't you ask all your questions to the extent that...
Well, I thought, I thought I would get an answer.
Understood, but, but my point is, when you're done, we'll, we'll comment on the things that we can. We are constrained in terms of what we can say about personnel, and I will give you back 15 seconds, so go ahead.
Great. Close 15 seconds there, sir. How fond advanced did the Personnel Committee receive the proposed changes? And did the job description change also or just the job title? Mrs. Fenton, I think you asked last week, or at the 22nd meeting, was it Mrs. you, Aquino? Was you maybe, was, is there a secretary permitted at the, involved in negotiations? Okay, you asked that question, okay. And so the answer there is yes, but it's limited. It's limited what the secretary can do. The secretary cannot, is not permitted to speak with the attorney or the board members. She just gives her stuff that she works really hard on, which I have in my car, to the union, and the union is supposed to present it to the board and the lawyers. Not really sure if that happened. It was presented to one of the union people, and I'm not really sure that that actually went to the board members. So you did ask that question, so I wanted to give you the, the correct answer. And I guess that's it. I, I also wanted to ask you if maybe, since the job description of a secretary was written in 1998, you might, y'all might want to change that, because I don't file and answer phones. That is not what I do. And I really do invite any one of you to come and sit with me for one day. Today would have been a great day because I was off last week. So it would, just come and sit with me one day, and you will see what the secretaries in Mount Olive do. We do not answer phones and file. We do do that, but that's not all we do. So if, do anybody have any answers for me?
Sure, I can, I'll jump in here. So number one, thank you for all that you do and all the secretaries. Without you, this whole place would just
I do know.
fall apart, and there'd be nothing, right? So what I, what I'm going to ask you to do is, because what we don't want to do is get into a situation where any of the board members stumble into negotiating outside the confines of collective bargaining. So submit all your questions in writing to me, and then I will take a look at those myself and Lynn and Dr. Kreider, which ones we can answer, which ones we have to refer you back to your association on.
I'm not in the association, Dr. Zwicki.
You're represented by the association.
I'm, I'm, I'm held, let me just, I'm held hostage by this association.
Okay, so I don't, I can't editorialize. So I'm going to, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to give you the answers, the ones I can. And the ones I can, I'm going to tell you where to go get them, and then you can just decide what you want to do from there, okay?
Okay, cool.
Send them all to me, and I will, or just walk upstairs tomorrow and
I will do that.
Give them to me, and we'll, we'll have that. Sound good? Thanks, Betty.
Thank you.
No problem.
Anyone else? Okay, close to the meeting, mirror to the public. And let's see, let us, let us have some comments from the board this time. We have old and new, but does anybody have any old business? Does anybody have any new business? All right. Dr. Giordano, would you like to say anything?
Yes, I would. I'd like to thank all the staff, administrators, teachers, Dr. Zwicki, central office members, secretaries, everybody, bus drivers particularly. I think this is the first year in a long, long time where we had zero issues with our busing. Busing is one of the hardest things to, as well as paraprofessionals, to, to hire people for right now. So kudos to everyone for making the opening day for our students and our staff run, run as smooth as it possibly could. So I'd like to thank everyone for that.
Mr. Narcisse?
I think we're all going to say thank you. Thank you so much for a fabulous start to the year, the staff, teachers, aides, lunch aides, everyone, bus drivers. I also wanted to say, I got the pleasure of witnessing, I had asked about the scoreboard and students' involvement. I had the great pleasure of witnessing one of our students getting trained on that scoreboard. So there is student involvement occurring, there's a couple glitches, but it was a great, great thing.
Robinson?
Just like to make a comment on personal contact with a student. Today, I got a letter, an email from a student, female student, in our high school. And I was absolutely thrilled. What she said was that she wanted to start, have a blood drive at Mount Olive. And she wanted, you know, to know, you know, if she, if she could do that. And I'm saying to myself that, good lord, this kid, a young, you know, 16, 17-year-old girl, whatever, is trying to get a blood drive and realizes what she's doing and how important it is. And I immediately had the idea to, you know, to write back and say, well, you know, we, we have to get, you know, we have to speak, our administration has to speak with the people from the blood drive, and there's a lot of different things about it that, that involve safety and our legal aspects on it. And, and just to tell her that, you know, how happy I was to see that, and I can't see any reason in God's earth why we couldn't do it. And I was thinking of the situation that happened to Mrs. Wehmet and some of the people in this audience, how, how absolutely crazy it is that we can't do that. I mean, it's just, it's just sad. I've been here 33 years on the board, and we've never had a problem with anything like this. This is all brand-new, manufactured, and information has been given that was not known to the normal public. Matter of fact, so many information, I didn't even know. So, I mean, there's something wrong here when we have people in this district who are giving information to people like him and, and let him use it. I, I just, there's something radically wrong. Thank you.
Mrs. Wehmet?
Thank you, Mr. Strelachi. Again, I'm going to say with my colleagues all said already, a great start to the 22-23 school year. Thanks to all our staff. And that would, you know, I always want to make sure I never not include someone. So administration, teachers, custodians, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, secretary slash administrative assistants, I always like that name a little bit better. Thank you, it was a great start. Thank you to Pam Agnes. I don't remember it ever being so smooth as what this year was. Thank you to Mr. Miller, you know, for all you did of just getting the schools ready. I mean, because that's a part of it, people tend to forget. You need the facilities in order to get the students in there, in order to use it. So thank you for that, as well as teaching them, you still need the nice environment that's around there. Mr. Karifi, I could never say, wow, you know, great, great job with just the safety and security. That has always been, you know, an issue. And I remember a few years ago when there was a big uproar over things happening, and, and I, I think because of with you in place and your staff, I think that we've had it just seamless and going through. Just thank you to everybody, thanks.
Dr. Gales?
Oh, wow.
I'm going to just go.
Okay.
I spoke up once, now it doesn't come back over here.
Set that timer.
This, this, no, no timer necessary. So I, I want to echo what my colleagues have said regarding congratulating everyone who made the opening of school smooth and successful. It takes a village, and it takes everyone involved, regardless of your title, your position, your station. Everyone adds something valuable to the experience of, of opening school successfully. So thank you to everyone who played a role. Bill, I, I want to thank you for bringing up the, the blood drive, because when I saw the email, I had the, the very same thought. But I said, I was going to wait until I came here to thank the young lady for sending the email about the blood drive and say, I wholeheartedly support it, speak to the administrators. When I was in Piscataway, we did annual blood drives, and they were tremendous success. So to have one of our high school students take that initiative and, and demonstrate leadership is absolutely fantastic. I had the opportunity to go to the ROC family picnic for about 10, 15 minutes. I got there towards the end, but I wanted to go by and say hello. It was a tremendous success, and everyone had a great time. According to our chief and our major, there were even some new families who showed up. And it's just a tremendous time to see our ROTC students, which I had the opportunity to do on 9/11 yesterday at the 9/11 memorial ceremony at Turkey Brook, where they presented colors at the event, and they did a wonderful job, so very proud of them. And I am so thankful that this board supported implementing ROTC. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, and...
Mrs. Fenton?
Well, I'd like to ditto everybody. I really, really appreciate the start of this year. You guys all did phenomenal, it couldn't have been done without anybody here. And I'm really excited, I hope we get to do that blood drive, because I think it's like an amazing thing. I would, however, like to read something that I wrote. I was very disturbed by someone's accusations last time we were here, so I want to clarify my vote that was questioned on July's meeting. When I leaned over to Dr. Zwicki to ask a question, it was a procedure question on that vote that was being brought before us. I knew how I wanted to vote, but I wanted clarification on to actually accurately express my vote. And this is a perfect example of why it is harmful to assume. I am really ashamed of the assumptions that are going on here. My job as an elected board member is to look at the situations given to me and make informed decisions that will be better for the student, staff, administration. I take pride in what I do, and it upsets me that I even have to bring this issue up. And I really would appreciate if people would, instead of getting up there and accusing people, would actually ask questions. That's really all I have to say, thank you.
Mrs. Aquino? Yes?
Oh, thank you. Oh, I got plenty. Yeah, I got plenty. Again, thank you, everyone, for, for the great start of the school year. I don't want to spend a lot of time on that, but I do want to say that I see so many teachers across the district post, posting on Twitter and all the activities that they're doing in their classroom, and it's so wonderful to see. And I try to comment on as many as I possibly can, but it's so terrific to see all of the teachers' work and the pictures of the students that they are able and what they're doing in the lessons. So really, congratulations to everybody. Also, I want to touch on Mr. Robinson, obviously, we all got the email about the blood drive, but I did respond to her. And I did say thank you for reaching out to us, and we would discuss it as a board, and hopefully we would let her know whether or not she can move forward. She did a lot of homework on that, she did a lot of research, she put all of that in her email, and I wanted to thank her for that. And also, we would all be remiss if we did not thank Mrs. McQueeney and the eighth grade band for the Rutgers game.
I've been here since you stole my thunder. It was absolutely phenomenal, and it was broadcast live on the Big Ten Network across the entire country. And it was awesome to sit there and then see, and then they put it up on the big screen, and the band was phenomenal.
I'm, I'm good now.
That's it?
I'm good.
Mr. Stari?
Yes, I want to congratulate everybody that's involved in the school district for a fantastic opening to school. As a fellow educator, I know we all were kind of sitting there with bated breath going into the school year, kind of being the first, as they say, normal school year. We didn't know what we were going to expect.
We didn't know what we were going to expect, and to have it go seamlessly is a big testament to the individuals in our district. Besides Max Verstappen winning on Sunday, that's all I have to say. Congratulations, Max.
Anything else? Dr. Zwicki? Anything else?
Mrs. Uquino stole my thunder, but I'll re-congratulate the band. As a Rutgers alumnus, I was choked up watching the Mount Olive Middle School Band go out there. It was truly special, and I know your scarlet through and through as well. It really was special, 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 and we won 65 to 7.
Listen, I must say, I'm a little upset that they never asked me for my blood. Maybe they're afraid to get my blood, I don't know. I don't know what it is. I just want everyone to know that we care about every single employee. I don't care if it's a custodian, food service, support staff, administrators, or what have you. We do care about everybody. We care about the community. On this dais up here, you have four educators. Then you have five of us who are not educators. Am I right, one? Are you an educator too?
No, I'm not.
One, two, three, yeah, four educators up here. And so, we're doing the best we can. You have to remember, we are part-time people. We don't work in the district, but we try to do the best we can, give our time and everything else. Are we going to make mistakes? Probably. Are we going to listen to you? Yes. But we want you to come and tell us because we want to hear what's going on, but we're trying to make this as civil as we possibly can. If you're not civil, it doesn't mean anything. I'm still amazed at the fact that when I first got on this board, I was a negotiator for EMO, for the Board for EMO. Then they changed the law because my wife was a teacher, so I couldn't beat that. But for nine years, for three contracts, I was the chief negotiator for supervisors and principals. Now, my daughter came to work in the district, now I can't do that. I guess they're going to, they think I'm going to give away the ship or something like that. What's going on in our, what I'm trying to say is going on in education today with the laws that they keep putting through, they're driving us nuts. There was a time when they were touting that TNE, third inefficient education. They wanted us, they were putting through a law that if they put through the law, we would be breaking the law. We would have been out of compliance. I mean, it's crazy what's going on. So, what I'm asking you is to bear with us, to come, help us run the district, give us your input, tell us what's going on. We have an investigation going on which will culminate the 19th of this month. So, we're trying to get everything done together. We can't talk about anything else. A lot of times, we want to do something, and our hands are tied, we cannot. Believe me, there's a lot of times we go home that we are as upset as you are, but just keep coming here, giving us your support, making us a good family, and we will continue to have the best school district in the state. Be resolved that the board meet in confidential session for the purpose of discussion for personnel and for matters of attorney, crime, police. May I have a motion to go into closed session? One favor?
Aye.
Closed session. No action will be taken.